Good evening. It is now seven P M. I would like to call the Monday, February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, Common Council Meeting to order. Clerk Jones, I believe that you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for the council and for yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat. And directions to do so are also in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and your address, as those are required for anyone speaking at in-person meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time. Also, you will be given five minutes to speak. And also, if you would like to speak at the end, please select to do so in the chat box, and the council president will call on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Due to the executive order by Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, the South Bend Common Council Meeting will be legally held by way of a virtual meeting by using Microsoft Teams application. Our invocation at this time will be given by First District Councilmember Kenneth Lee.
Thank you, President Wyatt and all of the council members. Bow your heads with me. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come and handle the business of our city. We ask that you would continue to lead and guide us in truth, in unity, and that you would bind us together with cords that cannot be broken so that we can effectively make the city of South Bend a better place. We ask God that you would give us divine leadership and guidance in the things pertaining to our city. And we ask that you would continue to allow peace and prosperity to be upon this city. We ask that you would look on those in different parts of the country who are experiencing winter issues in Texas and different places. We ask that you would send assistance and help for those individuals. We ask that you would bless our mayor, bless our police chief, bless all of the Common Council members and those who serve our city in every capacity. We ask that you would bless the citizens of this city and continue to make South Bend a great place to live. All the things we ask. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. At this time, Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Davis? Oh, okay. Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Warner?
Here.
Councilmember Wax?
Present.
Councilmember Nizgoski?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Vice President McBride?
Present.
President White?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. At this time, we'll now have the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Clerk Jones, will you please read the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
Today, there is no report on the Subcommittee on Minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to special business. There is no special business. We'll go directly to the reports from the city offices. At this time, we'll have an update on the Homeless Task Force by Jordan Gatheres, who is Deputy Chief of Staff. After his presentation, the council members will have opportunity to ask two questions in regards to the presentation. The last time we had update from the city officers, I started with the first, second, and third district representatives first. I was going the opposite at this time. I start with the at-large council members and move all the way down to the first district representative. This is an update, and there is no public input at this time. So at this time, I'm very pleased to welcome for update on the Homeless Task Force, Jordan Gatheres, Deputy Chief of Staff. Welcome.
Thank you, President Wyatt, and good evening, council members, members of the council. Jordan Gatheres, Deputy Chief of Staff with offices on the fourteenth floor of the County City Building. Today, I'm here to present before you three items. So the homelessness implementation group, fund allocation of homeless services, and then also the final recommendation list as it relates to the homeless implementation group. So I'm gonna pull up a PowerPoint presentation for you all here. One second. Can you, can everyone see my presentation? Okay, awesome. I know a lot of work has gone into addressing our most vulnerable population. Several meetings and conversations have taken place, especially in the face of the pandemic. So I just wanna take this time to thank everyone who's played an important and vital role in helping find workable solutions as a collective unit. So as we've been navigating through homelessness, I wanna turn your attention to this regional comparison between...
That's great. Someone was just telling me today that it's...
I'm gonna ask everyone to mute their mics.
Mr. Gatheres, you're muted, sir.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Warner.
She didn't mean for you to mute your mic.
Not you.
I'm not sure why it did that, but thank you. I would like to turn your eye to the regional comparison of 2019 and 2020. As you can see, this is a point-in-time count. And so this tool is to help understand homelessness around the state and the barriers that persist in connecting our neighbors without permanent supportive housing. And so this is just a snapshot that I want you guys, I would like you guys to look at in 2019 in our region, South Bend or St. Joe County in Region Two A. We had a total of four hundred and thirteen homeless individuals on the point-in-time count. And then, as you can see, last year, that number has increased to five hundred and sixteen. And so definitely wanna continue to realize that homelessness is not going away. And it's actually, you know, those numbers are actually rising, and we wanna go in the opposite direction, like our fellow regions that you can see here on this list. So in early August, Mayor James Mueller created the Homelessness Implementation Group with an outstanding group of diverse individuals and entities looking to navigate these uncertain times that we're living in and to continue to build a city that addresses our most vulnerable population. And so that took place until December of last year. And we're looking to reconvene next month, mid to late March of the new year. As I said, we had an outstanding group, included, you know, elected officials, city and county staff, service providers, business owners, community members, our police department here in our city, neighborhood advocates, and academic institutions. And so we had a great conversation. We met bi-weekly as a group. Total, we had about thirty to thirty-five members. And each week, and each week would, you know, fluctuate in participation. But for the most part, we had, we had great conversation. We really focused on issues surrounding homelessness, how we could be more efficient and effective as far as the service providers, as far as neighborhood and community support, well as city and county staff being a supporting cast as well in those conversations. Probably, we went on for about two weeks in those conversations, and then we all decided that it would be better to create subcommittees and be a little bit more laser-focused on certain topics as it related to homelessness because there are so many different levels. And so within those subcommittees, we divided into three groups: health and sanitation, weather amnesty, and housing, as well as a more longer-term item, which is permanent supportive housing. And so the reasoning behind the creation of this group was created, you know, after the post-encampments around the city and just the news reports about around them. We really wanted to create an environment where individuals in the community could come and speak on how we could better address our homeless individuals. So next, here is kind of a breakdown of the three different groups that I mentioned. The first group was led by our county health officer, Dr. Robert Einhardt. The second group, Housing and Weather Amnesty, was led by myself. And then the last group was led by Ann Mannix. And they did a phenomenal job in meeting weekly. Having, we split up our entirety group into those three groups, and so had roughly around, you know, seven to ten for each group to kind of make sure we were focused and everybody had an opportunity to speak and to relay their ideas and suggestions around homelessness. And so within those groups, at the end of, at the end of year, at December 2020, they were tasked with creating recommendations to the mayor and the city. And so each group has done that. And so very excited about the effort that every group had in the process of creating these recommendations. So in the first, in the first, in the first group, Health and Sanitation, their recommendations are as followed: to create and monitor and maintain a database of all persons experiencing homelessness in our county; to quantify the need for more affordable and permanent supportive housing. And that's more tailored to making sure that kind of hits on the last point there as far as having accessible... I'm sorry, my PowerPoint went away. Someone else controlling the... One second here. I'll try to bring it back up. So as, as I was saying, as it relates to, as it relates to the recommendation in Health and Sanitation, there, there seems to be making sure that we have ample, that we have ample housing during the pandemic so that individuals can maintain social distancing and health protocols. And so the next, the next recommendations, we would like to study the population of people who prey on homeless individuals and develop and implement best practices to reduce the predator's impact. I think this is something that we kind of talked about at the tail end of our conversations in 2020. We realized that there, you know, that there are a lot of activities that go on around encampments and around our homeless individuals. And so if we can better understand, if we can better understand that arena, I think we would be better off in being able to protect our neighbors here in the city. We also wanna continue to maintain and monitor chemical toilets, so porta-potties. I know the county assisted in providing one behind downtown SB. And then, as well as continuing laundry services, making sure that our individuals have a place free of charge to be able to wash their clothes during these tough times. Also, wanted to continue to develop a partnership with Transpo to provide free and affordable transportation, you know, as far as bus passes. That's something that, to make sure that they're able to continue to travel and get around our city. I think it's very important. I think we all think it's very important. And then lastly, tracking health insurance status of all homeless individuals. I think this is an important one as we're in a health pandemic, a health crisis with COVID-19. And so if we had a better tracking system, I think it would be well-suited for our homeless individuals. Next, within the Weather Amnesty and Housing Subcommittee, the recommendation is to continue operations at Weather Amnesty, and those sites are Hope Ministries and Center for the Homeless. I know that Center for the Homeless, we had extensive conversations around rapid testing for individuals and then also vaccine distribution. I know that that is a conversation of note now. And so that's something that we're gonna continue to have conversations around to make sure that our homeless individuals are in the best service of care. We also wanna make available cold weather shelter locations. This is important, especially during the winter. Here, I know we're in the tail end, but you never know. You never know in Indiana. There could be, you know, there can be an extended period of time where we might continue to still have snow here in our city. And so we wanna make sure that all individuals have a roof over their heads during this winter period. There's been conversations around extending the current Motel for Now program, which was funded by a private donor to place homeless individuals into motels. So that initiative has been, has been going well as of late to make sure that homeless individuals have a roof over their heads and so, and getting them off the streets. And so if we can continue to extend that program, I know, I know a lot of people in the community will be, will be excited. Continue to work to kind of utilize, underutilize buildings or vacant buildings within our, within our city. If we, you know, there's schools, churches, just for an example. If we're able to better have access to those buildings and develop them into spaces that are sustainable and safe for individuals, we definitely wanna continue to work to look into that. I know conversations around a low-barrier resource center with partners has been a topic of interest for quite some time. And so that, it's still at the forefront here within the Subcommittee and with the Implementation Group and our community as well. And then lastly, I think one of note is partnering with security companies to make sure, as we talked about, homeless individuals being predators and preyed upon, being able to make sure that we protect and serve our most vulnerable population. Last, the last Subcommittee, their recommendations, they wanna look to expand permanent supportive housing units as well as developers here in our city and then funding sources as well. So if we, if we can find additional funds to help that effort, we'd be very open to that. Developing a housing trust fund. This fund could be utilized in a multitude of ways. And it's, you know, it had a lot of conversation within the Subcommittee and looking forward to having further conversation as we look to develop and potentially establish a trust fund, whether it be within the county or the city. Also looking to establish a homeless contractor position. This would be able, this would be very helpful for us to make sure that we're on par with our homeless services, making, building that trust between homeless individuals and service providers and the community, making sure that we have enough bandwidth from a city, from a city standpoint and a community standpoint. And think this would be beneficial in its entirety. And then the last two here, supporting an education and advocacy campaign. We currently, we currently support this initiative in making sure that we have public support and community buy-in as it relates to homelessness and changing the narrative around what homelessness looks like and sharing the stories of these homeless individuals. And these are our neighbors, whether, you know, whether people like it or not. I think that, I think it's important to change that narrative and to be able to support our homeless population. So I think the education and advocacy campaign will be, will be a great tool to utilize here in our city. And lastly, emphasize the landlord and developer participation. You know, as it relates to expanding those permanent supportive housing units, we wanna make sure we have all parties involved so that we're able to do so. Next, we're gonna, we're gonna touch on kind of the city of South Bend funding allocation. And so first, this is our financial breakdown for this year. And so the, the community, the CDBG, that's, that's an acronym for Community Development Block Grants. And so they assist with the flow to moderate income and as well as making sure that people have decent, you know, and opportunities so that everyone can have a suitable living arrangement. And so we were able to allocate a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, a little over a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for all-site meals. And so within that, within those meals, those were between the months of May and December of last year, which served over thirty-six thousand meals. And so that's something that, you know, that we're definitely proud of and wanna continue. And I definitely wanna make note of the CV after, after both, after the CDBG and then also as we go on to the ESG. The CV stands for COVID. And so we wouldn't be able to do these things. And so the COVID, the Special Care Act distribution kind of kept us afloat during the pandemic, and it allowed us to do more than we normally would. And so with the additional funds. And so moving, moving towards ESG, that's an acronym for emergency solution grants, which is designed to kind of broaden the, broaden the existing emergency shelters, homelessness prevention activities, as well as rapid rehousing, and then ultimately helping individuals. There's this, helping, helping individuals to be stable here in our city. And so for the Motels for Now services, we allocated just over four hundred and seventy-seven hundred thousand dollars for that program with the motels. Next, the emergency services, we were allocated four hundred and fifty thousand in total with, with half of that, you know, two hundred thousand of that, that allocation went to, went to Center for the Homeless for hazard pay and operations as it related to food and PPE equipment. And then the, then the next went to, the two hundred and fifty remaining went to the life treatment centers for hazard pay as well. And along was their operational, operational programming there. And lastly, the Weather Amnesty. We allocated funds there as well. And so within, with Hope, they were capped at fifty individuals during Weather Amnesty, and it's still ongoing at the moment. And then Center for the Homeless, I believe they were capped between twenty-five to thirty individuals. And so I'm glad to both to still have those still up and running at the moment. I'm here, just another, another view of just kind of how we've, we, we allocated that funding, that CDBG, ESG, CV funding. And that, you know, that adds up to just over a million dollars. And it's important, and then also it's important to note that this does not include our quarantine site that we did at Motel Six. That was just under six hundred thousand dollars. And so I just wanted to kind of make note of that as well as, as well as permanent supportive housing and the bus passes as well. So just, and then also our Hope Avenue Permanent Supportive Housing project. So just kind of wanted to put that just for reference for everyone so they have, so they have that. So now that we're in 2021, definitely wanna go over some of the current and upcoming items here. You know, there's, this is all tentative, just so everyone's on the same page. And Weather Amnesty, if we were to continue that into this year and next, that cost would be two hundred and seventy-two thousand. There's also plans around a new center, potential intake center, you know, as well as scope, scoping, operations and planning and design. We have, we have set aside, have money there allocated for a hundred and thirty-three thousand. And then, as mentioned earlier in the recommendations, the city implementation contract position. That's something that we're establishing as a city to help coordinate and help the current working group that we've created and also to add bandwidth to kind of push some of these, these recommendations to assist with, to potentially assist with a county-wide coordinator in the near, in the near term. The education campaign, we wanna allocate funds there, you know, for marketing purposes to make sure to change that narrative, to flip the narrative to a positive one. Creating affordable or free transportation for individuals so that they're able to get around our city. We have allocated funds for that at thirty thousand. And then as it relates to leasing for public, for permanent supportive housing, we have a hundred thousand dollars allocated for that. And so overall, we have six hundred and fifty thousand total that we're allocating to our most, to our most vulnerable population. And this is, again, this is a tentative budget, but hoping that we can move on a lot of these items here. So next steps, you know, I think as we continue to work through, as we continue to work through our efforts and this concept of a shared ownership for both the successes and failures here in our city as it relates to homelessness, we wanna continue Weather Amnesty. We wanna continue to explore extending the Motel for Now program with the county. Again, establish and hire the city contractor position for homelessness. And then also, we wanna continue to, we were awarded the selection into the CHA, IACDA, Indiana Supportive Housing Institute. This was the same institute that had development for the Hope, Hope Avenue Homes. And so hopefully, you know, this doesn't guarantee us any funding, but it does give us a competitive advantage to secure funding for another project here in our city. So we're very excited about that nomination and that session started last week. And so looking forward to continue to learn more about the process and how we can best secure those funds for our city. Also, with the education campaign, we have partnered with the, with IUSB in their marketing class, their senior marketing class. And they are going to create an education marketing campaign for homelessness for our city. And so that has launched as well. So that is in the works. So excited about that partnership. So excited about that partnership and to work with that academic institution and the seniors there, and, and excited to, to update you all on that progress. We definitely hope to reconvene and reconvene the implementation group. I know August to December wasn't enough. We know we're gonna be, we know that we're gonna be within homelessness, be at this work for a long time with homelessness. So we're hoping to, to start that back in mid to late March, so next month, and, and hoping that, you know, that we can continue to have the participation that we had in the beginning, in the beginning, or late, late, late last year to earlier this year. Continue expiration of the new center or campus or intake center, if you will, hoping to continue that, that, that conversation. Just want to be clear that no site or location has been identified yet, but, but definitely open to having those conversations. And then lastly, collaborating with the county on affordable housing recommendations is going to be monumental in our approach. So with that, that concludes my presentation, but I, I will add that I'm proud to be a part of this work. You know, I, I think we have an outstanding group of individuals here on the call tonight. The community that, that's watching and hearing, I want to thank you all, you know, understanding that, again, that we're going to be at this work for a while and, and, and understanding that ending homelessness isn't going to end overnight. And so I, I just want to thank you all and, and know that we're going to continue to make progress and create an empathetic bridge of compassion to continue to navigate these, these uncertain times and to continue to fight to build a city that provides support and opportunity for all, for, for all of those who call South Bend home. So thank you and happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gatherers, and thank you for your presentation, but also every person that was a member of the homeless task force and implementation team, please know that we are deeply appreciative of not only your commitment to serve, but also the work that you have done and you continue to do to support our homeless population. At this time, we'll go to council members. Each council member will have opportunity to ask two questions. I'm going to start first with the at-large council members. This time, I will call upon Councilwoman Rachel Thomas-Morgan.
Thank you, President White. Mr. Gatherers, thank you very much for your very helpful update. Really appreciate your presentation. I too, like President White, just want to thank you for your leadership on this and thank all the members of the implementation group. I was supportive of having such a group move forward and that, that group be people who are invested, already providing services for our homeless population across the city because they would know what, what's the best way forward. And the list that you presented certainly shows, shows that and, and the wonderful work that has been done so far. The, the one question I have is wondering about what conversations or which committee kind of talks about creative funding sources? So I've been following Portland, Oregon's referendum that was passed in May of 2020 and just wondering if that had come up in any of the, of the discussions, any of the subgroups, and if, if that's something worth considering. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Morgan, Rachel Thomas-Morgan. I, I think that it's definitely something we're considering. And, and I know in, in the Weather Amnesty Housing Committee, we definitely talked about different funding sources and philanthropic efforts that could be beneficial to helping our homeless population. And so, but I, I will be honest and say that, you know, that we, we, we still need to continue to talk through those, those conversations. And homelessness is undoubtedly one of the most, most multifaceted and complex crisis, you know, that impacts every urban core. And so I think that we can definitely continue those conversations and, and put that at the forefront in our, in our subcommittees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas-Morgan. Will now move to Councilwoman Lori Hammond.
Thank you, President White, and thank you, Mr. Gatherers, for your very detailed presentation. This is for me a breath of fresh air to see the city moving forward on something that I personally feel so very passionate about. Just for clarity, in 2020, the total expenditure was about 1.4 million, and we're looking at about 650,000 for 2021. And looking at the point in time counts, we know that the numbers are going to be higher in 2021 than in 2020. I personally have sat down with Dan Parker to go over some of the finances, to discuss with him possible places where additional funding could come. But do you have any idea around the idea, around expanding the prospect of the amount of money for 2021? Has that been discussed?
To my knowledge, that, that hasn't been discussed and, and it's still tentative. And so I, I do, I do, I will say as it relates to the point in time count, that, which is done annually, I think that it's, you know, I think it's important to note over the last decade, despite an increase, I, I do think that overall we are seeing some, some decreases in, in some areas as it relates to youth and, and veterans. And, and, and so I, I do hope that, you know, as we, we're anticipating or assuming an increase, hopefully that, hopefully that number, that total number doesn't encompass the full population of our homeless individuals.
Thank you. Just one other question. In the PowerPoint, you reference a resource center. That's a, a new term in this context. We, I've heard references to gateway centers and intake centers, but resource center, can you define that for me? And is that considered a high barrier, low barrier? What does this resource center look like?
Yeah, so thank, thank you for that question. So I, I, I do believe that it is a low barrier shelter. And, and personally, from my, from my description of what a low barrier shelter or an intake center would look like, it would deliver housing, health, and hope to people experiencing homelessness and, and of course, having those wraparound services. So not only that those individuals who were able to be there are not only surviving, but thriving as well.
What would be the total beds for this? Like what size are we thinking?
That's a great question. And I, I have, I will be sure to continue to have those conversations around the actual number, but at this time, we do not have the actual number of beds or capacity for, for the intake center or resource center.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, President White.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Will now move to the sixth district, Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski.
Thank you, President White, and thank you, Mr. Gatherers, for your very thorough presentation. I just had a couple, well, actually, one question that I really have, when you talked about the homelessness coordinator position, what do you think the timeline is for that? And is that just a recommendation? Or do you believe that's something that moving forward is going to be needed to help manage, you know, to help manage the implement, what the implementation group is recommending?
Absolutely. Great, great question, Councilwoman Niskoski. So I, I do believe that the establishing a, a city contractor for, or to, to coordinate and help with the current working group, we're, we're, that is definitely something that is viable and something that we're working towards to get done here in, in, in the near term. And so it's important to note that, that, that this, that this position is not equivalent to a salary of a city employee just due to the cost of tax and insurance and equipment that, that would be needed for, for, for this, for this position. But no, this is something that we're, we're highly considering and, and hope to, to have posted here soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Niskoski. Will now move to the fifth district, Councilman Eli Wax.
Thank you, President White. Thank you for your presentation, Jordan. It was very thorough and informative. It appeared that a lot of focus is being placed on assisting homeless individuals. What is being done outside directly providing housing to identify the root cause of homelessness in our area and to hopefully help reduce it?
Yep, so, so what's being, so I think it's important to know that the city does not provide, you know, direct services, but we are working with, with homeless service providers who are more on the ground and, and dealing. And a lot of the service providers are on the implementation group, speaking to kind of the need to understand the current status of, of the different levels of homelessness. And so that's given us a great perspective on, on truly what's happening at ground level. I'm not sure if that answers your question, Councilman Wax.
Not, a, a little bit, but the recommendations and the, and the ideas here seem to do a lot to assist people who are currently experiencing homelessness. My question is more is, is the city taking a look and trying to identify why people are homeless and to try to implement solutions to prevent homelessness other than actually providing housing?
Yeah, so I, I think the creation of the implementation group was, was definitely speaking to prevention and intervention as well. And so those, those conversations have been had within, within our, within our conversations in August and December, but we're hoping to have more conversation here in March on how to, how to be more preventative here, here in the future.
Okay, I, I appreciate that because while obviously it's important to take care of people while they're in that situation, the ideal is that we wouldn't have people in that situation in the first place. Getting to that, I guess it's a follow-up on the same idea. I appreciated your regional chart that you provided at the beginning, and I couldn't help but notice that based on a quick review, it seems that we have a disproportionately high number of people experiencing homelessness in our area versus other parts of the state. Do you have an idea of why that might be?
Um, that's a great question. I, I do not have the answer to, to that, to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wax. Will now move to the fourth district, Councilman Tor Warner.
Thank you, President White. I, I want to commend you, Jordan. I tried to sit in on a lot of the meetings and just kind of listen to, to the folks, you know, on the ground and what they were doing and commend you for all the work you put in. And really want to give a shout out to Ann Mannix. I, I listened to her, her group quite a bit and kind of followed along, and she had some great ideas and really kept things moving. So I want to commend and thank Ann Mannix for, for her work. I, I think I, I kind of tied two takeaways from, from the listening to the, to the meetings, and one of those was one that coordination is key. And even though providers and kind of meet regularly, that even just having a coordinator to connect the dots between neighborhoods and services and food pantries and, and, you know, job training programs and affordable housing opportunities and things like that, somebody to just connect the dots for folks is, is crucial. And so I was very glad to see the coordinator kind of make it through the final recommendation list. And then the other kind of take, major takeaway was, you know, you just can't house folks. You have to have the wraparound services, whether that's addiction services or job training services or something like that. And so that, that was kind of the two takeaways. I, I do have a question, and I would like Ann to answer this and kind of explain a little bit the housing trust concept. Really, I think building affordable housing for all levels of income folks is crucial. And that gets back to Councilman Wax's point was, okay, we've got folks that are already experiencing homelessness. How can we keep others from getting to that point? And I think, so if, Ann, could you take a minute and explain the housing trust and how that would work and kind of what the benefit of that is?
Yes, can I speak to, my name is Ann Mannix, 724 West Washington. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, one problem is you can get the funding for the building, but there's no funding for supportive services. So one option for funding that's already in the state legislation is you could charge an additional $10 fee, or I think is maybe ten to, $10 every time someone records a document. And then you can put that in a housing trust fund. And that would produce maybe 400,000 a year to be used for services. And then if there's additional funds, people could put them, say we decide we're going to give a little of the gaming money to homelessness every year, you could put it in there, and then you could have a group administer it and allocate it to new projects. So we would have to talk to the county and get them to approve that. But it would be an ongoing funding source that would continue to exist, so you wouldn't have to allocate funds every year. Does that make sense to people?
Yeah, thank you, Ann. I, I have no further questions. Thank you, those are my two.
Thank you, Councilman Tor Warner. Move to the third district, Councilwoman Sharon McBride.
Thank you so much, President. Thank you, Mr. Gatherers, for that thorough synopsis of our homelessness and where we are. It's been a pleasure working on the homelessness committee since 2016 and glad that we have made a lot of strides. We definitely have a long way to go. But my questions are, if there's a possibility to get best we can, the council, the breakdown of the homeless as we know, I know, I don't know if everyone is still operating in silos, but who is manding the homeless list as far as the Motels For Now, Oaklawn, Broadway Church, Tracy Holmes, I mean, St. Mark is Our Lady of the Road, Couch Surfers, there, the list goes on and on with the Center for the Homeless and Hope. So I'm hoping that there's a list that we have to track best we can, the vulnerable population. And secondly, it is up in the House now to cut 26 million dollars out of the substance abuse funding. And that is going to be a major blow to our most vulnerable population across the state, including the homelessness. So, and also mental health services have been cut. And I'm wondering if we are looking at ways and means to try to provide services for mental health and substance abuse that have been lacking. And those are my major concerns. I'll yield my other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. Mr. Gatherers, do you have any responses?
Yeah, so thank you, Councilwoman McBride. I will definitely look into that list that, that you're referring to as far as tracking the different homeless individuals within different parties and organizations. And then I'll, and then also thank you for sharing the information as far as legislative affairs downstate as it relates to the cutting of funding for substance abuse and mental health services. I'll be sure to track those as well and see how, how that, how that progresses through the legislature.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will now move to second district representative, Councilman Henry Davis.
Yeah, thanks, Hugh, Mr. Ga- yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Hugh "Mr. Gatheres" for your presentation. Sir, you, and I don't really even have a question. I just believe, and this is what Lori said, and I'm going to, you know, tag onto that. And earlier when we met with Jeff Ray, there needs to be a funding stream that is a lot larger than picking up on different grants and so to speak, these quick fixes. And I asked Mr. Ray earlier if there was any appetite on the boards and to think about using some of the money from hotel motel tax to help support these sorts of initiatives. Seems like you guys have it all thought out. I have no problem with the vision. I just know that a vision can't be completed without funds. And the money that is going in for homelessness and the emergency funds, that's not going to support an active program that you guys are trying to deliver and also implement. I'm just telling you right now, I'm in favor of an increased funding for the programs that are desired and also needed in this community. And I think that maybe there should be a conversation between administration and the hotel motel tax dollar to help increase that dollar. And that's all I have to say, but good job, brother. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. We'll move now to 1st District Representative, Councilmember Kenneth Lee.
Thank you, President White, and thank you, Jordan Gatheres, for the many early mornings meetings. And you had such a group of personalities to manage and very strong-willed, strong individuals. So I want to say thank you for doing a real professional job managing everybody and keeping the agenda moving. I only have a few, just a question of, the chart that you showed that we had about 500 people that are homeless in the city. And of those 500, how many have been housed recently? How many have we, how many people have we gotten out of the cold this year?
So for clarity, Councilman Lee, that 500 encompasses the whole region, so St. Joe County.
Oh, okay.
And so, yeah, just kind of wanted to make that point of clarification there. And so I'm unsure how many we have currently here in our city, but definitely could follow up with you as it relates to how many we have here in South Bend.
And then to echo what Councilmember Sharon McBride was talking about, we're hearing that there needs to be some advocacy from South Bend for dollars that are allocated in the city, allocated from the state. And no one's fighting for those dollars for us, for mental health and substance abuse. So those are big issues of why people end up homeless. So I would just like to say that it would be good to know that, or to form a group that will be looking into making sure that South Bend is getting their fair share of that, those monies and also those opportunities. So that's all I have. But again, thank you, Jordan. I was so impressed. And to get up at 8:00 in the morning and be on a Zoom call and have so many different personalities, it was really impressive to see the things that come out of it. And I really hope that these things will be implemented because I think we have the willpower to be able to end homelessness in South Bend. I think we can get it done. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you. We'd like to thank all the council members for your outstanding questions, statements as well. Mr. Gatheres, you have a lot of follow-up to do, and I know that we'll be hearing from you very soon. One thing about being the last person, all of your questions, if not many of them, have already been asked. So again, the only question that I have, when you put up the chart about the regional comparison, do we know what those other regions are doing, the type of service that they're providing? We have the numbers, but in terms of the actual service delivery and how they're coordinating those services. You don't have to answer the question now, but that's my only question that I have at this time.
Absolutely, and I can definitely, I can add that to my list of follow-ups, President White, as far as kind of, you know, the regional approach and those active conversations to join together on solutions and how, you know, how they see success and failure and how we've seen success and failure and to have a coordinated effort in our response to homelessness.
Again, thank you for a wonderful presentation. And we want to thank all of the members of the task force for your efforts, your expertise, your commitment to the work that is before us. And please note that we sincerely thank you as well. So we'll now move to the rest of the council agenda. And all of you are welcome to stay if you want to hear some of the other items that we'll be discussing this afternoon. There are no bills to be heard under the Committee of the Whole, resulting in no bills that will be heard under Third Reading. We will actually move directly to our resolutions. We have two resolutions that will be heard. The first resolution is Resolution of Bill 21-05. Clerk Jones, would you please read Resolution 21-05?
Yes. 2105, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, confirming certain areas within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 1915 North Bendix Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46628, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Royal Adhesives and Sealants LLC.
Thank you. This is a confirming resolution, so there will be no committee report or a public hearing at this time. The like for the record to reflect that the designating resolution was approved February the 8th, 2021. Do we have a presenter? In terms of sharing the confirming resolution? Would that be someone from Community Investment?
Are we in resolutions? This is Dan Buckenmeyer.
Yes, we are, Dan.
You moved so quickly after the homeless thing. I looked away for a second. I apologize.
And the reason why that happened, Dan, is that we do not have any bills under the Committee of the Whole or for Third Reading.
I didn't even get time to go put my good shirt on for you.
Oh, that's all right.
Please, take me as I am. This is just the confirming resolution, as everyone knows. This is Dan Buckenmeyer, Department of Community Investment, 14th floor of the City-County Building. So we presented this two weeks ago, both at committee, where it went forward with a positive recommendation, and then the declaratory, excuse me, resolution was passed unanimously. This is a personal property tax abatement for Royal Adhesives, also known as HB Fuller. You will recall that they did come with some zoning changes to council several weeks ago in order to put some tanks and so on out in the back of their facility, which is on Bendix Avenue, just east of the airport. And so we are in the investment phase of that. They're ordering their equipment, getting ready to be able to take the adhesive materials that they produce for the basically rubber roofing market. And rather than sending that out to another facility to be aerosolized and put into canisters that can be then sprayed out, they're going to verticalize that at this location and in South Bend. I'll remind you that this was a kind of a competitive view. They had a facility in Houston and the facility in South Bend here, they were looking at both of them as possible solutions. They ultimately went with South Bend and were grateful for that, and they asked for this assistance in kind. They're making a formerly 1.3, but a much higher private investment in this equipment. Of course, there are no personal property taxes presently, but they will pay an estimated $16,000 within the five-year period of the phase-in and after that, $15,000 a year. So again, this is just the confirming resolution. We ask for your support. Unfortunately, Mr. Greenlee, who was with us two weeks ago, was not able to make it suddenly, so it's just me here, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Councilmembers, do you have any questions regarding the confirming resolution? I do not see any hands up at this time. I would like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution Bill 21-05.
I make a motion that we, for passage of the bill.
I second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolution 21-04 has been adopted. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you as well, Mr. Buckenmeyer. We'll now move to Bill 21-10. Clerk Jones, would you please read Resolution 21-10?
Yes. 2110, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, supporting passage of Senate Bill 164, a bill being considered by the Indiana General Assembly, increasing the current St. Joseph County Innkeeper's Tax from 6% to 8%, and spelling out how those funds should be allocated to help develop product, enhance tourism, stimulate economic growth, and create jobs in St. Joseph County.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, President White, the Personnel and Finance Committee met earlier on Resolution 2110 and sent this to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Councilman Troy Warner, is there a presenter?
I'll get started and kind of do the initial presentation. So there is six co-sponsors. The council members have co-sponsored this resolution, myself, President White, Vice President McBride, Councilmember Niskoski, Councilmember Tomas Morgan, and Councilmember Lee. So there currently is a bill at the State House, Senate Bill 164, which would, if passed, allow the county council to raise the hotel motel or innkeeper tax from currently at 6% up to 8%. St. Joe County has one of the lower hotel motel taxes in the state. But we locally do some of the most hotel nights, primarily because of the University of Notre Dame and football and some of the other things that go in the summers and other camps and Youth on Parade and things like that also drive a lot of hotel room nights here. So I do want to be clear to the public about one thing. This resolution just confirms our support for this, that the county council would still have to approve it and pass it. The increase, the hotel motel tax in the City of South Bend goes to support the Century Center, the Potawatomi Zoo, and the Morris Performing Arts Center. This would bring us up level with Allen County and Kokomo Howard County. I will not read the whole resolution, but kind of skip to the meat and the potatoes of it. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as followed, the South Bend Common Council joins the mayor of South Bend in supporting the increase of the St. Joseph County Innkeeper's Tax and asks the Indiana General Assembly to approve Senate Bill 164, giving St. Joseph County the ability to adopt additional tools to develop additional product that will spur economic growth, new capital investments, and jobs. So this is a letter that our folks that are down in Indy and talking to our legislators can go and show that there's broad support within the community for this measure. The hotel motel tax is primarily paid for by visitors coming here and our community. So that's why I'm supporting this. I'll move now to Mr. Ray with council, he can kind of give us an update. And then I'll move on to the other council members and co-sponsors if they'd like to make a statement.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, would you state your name and home address for the record, please?
Madam President, members of the council, Jeff Ray, President and CEO, South Bend Regional Chamber, 101 North Michigan Street in South Bend. Want to say thank you for the opportunity to be with you this evening to speak in favor of this resolution. I want to report broad community support for this initiative. On last Monday night, we were in front of the Mishawaka Council, asking for an identical resolution, which they also passed. And our next step will be with the county council. As Councilman Warner mentioned, we think broad community support is critical to getting this across the finish line at the State House. And if we can go with the support of the mayors, the commissioners, the councils, hoteliers, attractions, the business community, it really helps our case. This passed the Senate just last week and moves on to the House now. And again, I appreciate your recognition of this important stimulus that we believe will help us grow product, which in turn will help support an industry that supports over $700 million of direct spending in our community each year and over 8,000 jobs. And so with that, I'll just say thank you and encourage you to support this resolution this evening.
Thank you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Any of the other co-sponsors, anything to add at this time?
Any co-sponsors, you would like to add any comments? Please reach your hand so I know who to call on.
President White, I'm sorry, my hand raise button isn't working.
Okay, well...
Oh, here it is. Sorry, I got it.
I'll just call based on the resolution, the council members that are sponsors. So I'll start with you, Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan, followed with Councilwoman Sharon McBride.
Thank you. I just want to end my support, obviously, as a co-sponsor to this resolution. It's an important time to be able to capture this additional revenue for our community. I just want to share a little anecdote. In February of last year, 2020, my husband and I were taking a walk in our neighborhood, which has about four bed and breakfasts, three or four bed and breakfasts, and we ran into one of those innkeepers. And so, mind you, it's February, beginning of February, and I asked them, how's the business going? And they were ecstatic to say, this is the best February they've experienced in a long time. And I asked, well, why would that be? And they said, well, you know, February is typically a very low month, but the fact that we have events going on downtown, the inn was booked through, you know, through, I can't remember what he said, like into the summer because of Lion King, that was going to be opening March 4th at the Morris. And so we know from the tourism data that when people are attracted... That when people are attracted to these kinds of events that happen downtown in our community. So they'll come for the Lion King, but they'll eat at restaurants, Grab coffee in coffee shops, probably visit Potawatomi Zoo as well. And so I share that because part of capturing this tax revenue Is the importance of continuing to build product and attraction in our community. And so the more that we can continue to enhance tourism, Create events that drive people to our city, The more benefit it is to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Councilwoman Sharon McBride?
Thank you, President White and Mr. Ray for your presentation. I am honored to be a co-sponsor of this bill as well And excited to know that Mishawaka already passed such item And optimistic that the county council will follow suit. I know they have discussion about it on tomorrow. So very optimistic and think that this is a great economic boost For the city of South Bend and St. Joe County. So thank you so much.
Thank you as well. We move now to Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski.
All right. Thank you, President White, and thank you, Mr. Ray, for coming. First, I would like to recognize our state legislators That recognized this increase to get us on par with some of our other cities And the impact that it will have on an industry that's really been devastated by COVID-19. Now is a perfect time to pass this, to get us up to par, To help the industry of tourism, entertainment. They've just been hit really hard. So for me, I think it's a wonderful way, as we're attracting people in. As Rachel said, you know, with Lion King and some of the events that we do have, And I know we're all looking forward to getting back to some type of normalcy come this summer. This is really the perfect time to pass this. And it will be a huge boost for the economy, jobs, And trying to get some of that industry back on track That some of them, quite frankly, is barely hanging on through this pandemic. So I'm full supporter of this. I'm glad to be a co-sponsor And I'm glad this is before us and happy to support it.
Thank you. Councilman Kenneth Lee?
Thank you, President White and to Mr. Ray, thank you. Thank you to Troy Warner for his presentation. He did pretty good for not to be the presenter. I think this is a great opportunity to recap or create resources For all of the wonderful things that we have gone on in South Bend. I am so excited about the positive direction that we're moving in. Couple of weeks ago, I mean, it was like every other day we were presenting Or being somewhere where something great is happening in our city. So I was glad to be a co-sponsor of this bill, of this, And really hope that this is going to help be the boost, the economic boost That we need in order to go higher and do better things. So thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you as well. Prior, before going to council members to see if they have any questions, I would like to echo my support as well. It was a privilege to have been asked to be one of the co-sponsor For this very needed Senate bill. I look forward to the outcomes as we begin to look at other communities. They're at 8%, South Bend is at 6%. So there is a gap, but most importantly, besides the gap, There is a need for this bill to pass So that we can begin to address some of the various industries That have been disproportionately impacted because of COVID-19. But we are a great city. There are a lot of great activities. I was very disappointed with the Lion King. I'm still, I'm very disappointed. I can't wait to see when it's going to come back to our city. But I'm very supportive of this particular resolution as well. Before going to the privilege of the floor, I want, I'm sorry, the public hearing. Council members, do you have any questions of the presenters? Any questions? I do not see any hands raised. We're now go to.
President White?
Yes.
You have Councilmember Davis and Councilmember Hammond who have their hands up.
Okay, I'll go first with Councilmember Henry Davis, followed by Councilwoman Lori Hammond.
Absolutely. I echo everyone else's voice when it comes to how we improve Some of our finances and revenue streams here. I think it's an awful idea. I just wish I'd have been a co-sponsor as well. Next time something good like this comes along, folks, you know, include me. I think that this does deserve our attention And I pray that, you know, downstate, they see it our way and we can move forward. So we look forward to your leadership, Mr. Ray. Thank you. And also the rest of the council co-sponsors, thank you as well. But next time we do it, include me. I want to have some.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. We definitely will do that. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Thank you, President White. I am very much in support of this bill. I also would have liked to have been invited to be part and to be given the chance to co-sponsor. So I would like to echo that, you know, It'd be really nice for people to reach out and see if others would like to take part as well. But I'm really looking forward to when we can get South Bend Back to what we all want South Bend to be with our entertainment and our hotels. And this will just help to move that forward. So I'm very much in support. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments as well. We'll now move to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of Resolution 21-10?
Okay, I have Rob DeKleen that wants to speak in support of 2110 and also Jeff Ray.
Okay. Will you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Rob DeKleen. I'm with the South Bend Regional Chamber and visit South Bend, Mishawaka. We're at 101 North Michigan Street in downtown South Bend. And I just want to start first with a thank you hearing, your conversations tonight. You really recognize what tourism means for South Bend and St. Joseph County. And I truly thank you for that. It's a huge impact on our local economy. And it's also been hugely impacted by the pandemic. How exciting, though, in the last week, we've seen Century Center announce a few public shows. The Morris is going to have a few public shows. So maybe we're at the very, very beginning of recovery, but that recovery is going to take a long time. And what this bill, what this increase does is very deliberately and intentionally invests in product development. And quite strategically, you know, downtown South Bend is a huge destination within the destination. Sports tourism is our number one niche market within the visitor market and the sales market. So a sports facility in North Mishawaka could be very, very successful. Investing in Indiana's first zoo and making it a true destination zoo, There's a lot of opportunity there. And that can not only be a destination zoo for a visitor, But an experience enhancer when people are coming here as sort of an agenda add-on. But I think perhaps one of the most exciting things is the Tourism Capital Investment Fund, Or Tourism Capital Improvement Fund. That's going to be ongoing investment in the product. And I'm so happy to hear a few of you mention tonight, literally those words, product investment, And recognizing just what it means that the more reasons we have to bring people to South Bend and St. Joseph County, The more money is going to get spent here and the more hotel rooms are going to be filled. And that's the last thing I just want to close with is, You know, on the cover of the Tribune about 10 days ago was another piece of good news about recovery. Construction has restarted on the Four Winds Hotel. That's going to be the largest hotel in South Bend. That's 317 rooms. About 25 more rooms more than the Doubletree in downtown South Bend. There's another hotel under construction, a Darden and 933. It's a La Quinta, about 74 rooms. So that's almost 400 rooms to add to the 5,000 and about 30 rooms that we've got. So in the very short, near future, about two years from now, we're going to have about 5,400 rooms to fill. So I think this is a very strategic way to invest in products to help fill those 5,400 rooms And also bring back a local industry that has struggled perhaps the most throughout the pandemic. So again, just thank you very much for your consideration of this. And I truly thank you for your just recognition of what tourism means to South Bend and St. Joseph County.
Thank you for your comments. We'll move to Mr. Jeff Ray, followed by Mr. Aaron Perry.
I don't have any other comments. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you as well. We'll move now to Mr. Aaron Perry, Who would like to speak in support of Resolution 21-10. Last, you state your name and address for the record.
Yeah. Good evening, council. Aaron Perry, Executive Director of Venues Parks and Arts. Address is at 301 South St. Louis Boulevard. Only wanted to pop in and say how much I appreciate the support of all the council, The sponsors and those who didn't sponsor that'll be voting in favor. Really appreciate the support. Rob and Jeff, thank you for all your efforts downstate to help move this forward And also with the county in Mishawaka. As been said, several of the South Bend assets really serve to benefit from this, Most notably the zoo and the Morris Performing Arts Center. So we're very excited about that. And certainly just had to comment that we are looking forward to bringing back Lion King, Since that comes up every time we're on these meetings. But we don't have a date yet, although we did just announce the good news with the council That we are slowly starting to return to public shows at the Morris and the Century Center. Very decreased capacities, lots of protocols in place, But it won't look like normal for quite some time, but a slow return to normal is on the way. So thanks for your support.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else waiting to speak in support of Resolution 21-10?
No, that exhausts our list for that.
Is there anyone waiting to speak in opposition?
There is no one waiting to speak in opposition of Resolution 21-10.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now closed. Council members, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution 21-10.
I make a motion for passage of Resolution 21-10.
I'll second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Yes. Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolution 21-10 has been adopted. Will now move to Bill's first reading. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 72-21 a first reading?
Yes. 7221, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana, Amending Ordinance Number 10749-20, Fixing Maximum Salaries and Wages of Deputies and Non-Bargaining Employees Appointed by the City Clerk of the City of South Bend, Indiana for the calendar year 2021.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 72-21 To the Personnel and Finance Committee set for public hearing and third reading for March the 8th.
So moved.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you please give Bill 73-21 a first reading?
Yes. 7321, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending the Zoning Ordinance for Property Located at 2011 South Ironwood, Councilmanic District Number 3 in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I would like to entertain a motion to send this to the zoning and annexation committee For public hearing and third reading set for March 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you please give Bill 74-21 a first reading?
Yes. 7421, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending the Zoning Ordinance for Property Located at 600 North Niles Avenue, Councilmanic District Number 4 in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 74-21 To the zoning annexation committee for public hearing and third reading set for March the 22nd.
So moved.
We have a motion and has it been seconded?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you please give her reading to Bill 75-21?
Yes. First, 7521, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departmental and City Services Operations For the year 2021. $123,530 from General Fund Number 101, $308,000 from Parks and Recreation Fund Number 201, $2,998,275 from the DCI Federal Fund Number 212, Federal Grant Fund Number 212, $200,000 from the Local Road and Street Fund Number 251, $51,241 from the Human Rights Federal Grant Fund Number 258, $386,146 from COVID-19 Response Fund Number 264, $420,000 from Local Road and Bridge Grant Number 265, $250,000 from the MVH Restricted Fund, $48,600 from the Cops More Grant Fund Number 295, $10,000 from the Consolidated Building Fund Number 600, And $6,990,000 from the Industrial Revolving Fund Number 754.
Thank you. Would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 75-21 To the Personnel and Finance Committee set for public hearing and third reading for March the 8th, 2021.
So moved.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, I'm going to give you a couple of minutes to catch your breath and we'll call the roll.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The last first reading that we have for tonight is Bill 76-21. Clerk Jones, will you please give this bill a first reading?
Yes. First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, For Budget Transfers for Various Departments Within the City of South Bend, Indiana for the year 2021.
I would like to entertain a motion to send this bill to Personnel and Finance Committee Set for public hearing and third reading for March the 8th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will now move to Agenda Item Number 11. Is there any unfinished business at this time?
I don't know.
I don't know if it's unfinished, but I would like to say-
I'm sorry, I can't. You're breaking up Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
A little bit.
I don't like this. Can you hear me now?
It's still choppy.
I wanted to reach the table about the uptick in crime. Obviously, there was a layoff from, you know, December until current day. Being a lot of phone calls from residents in those areas, their main district, and they want something done. I know that we do a budget process, we pay out the police and all the crime prevention advocates that work for the city. So I'm just interested in what is the plan? That's an administration conversation.
Yes. And we will forward this question to the administration. Thank you. Is there any other unfinished business? Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Thank you, President White. Earlier this week, I had sent out an email to all of the other council members asking for input. I will be meeting with Dr. Cummings tomorrow at 3:30 to do a preliminary meeting before he sets an agenda for his conversation before the council. So if anyone has any particular questions you would like him to address or content that you would like to make sure is on his agenda, could you please get that to me before 3:30 tomorrow? Thank you.
Thank you as well. Is there any other unfinished business? If not, I move to new business. Is there any new business? I do not see any hands up. Will now move to privilege of the floor. This is individuals who wish to address the council, mistake their name and their residential address, and this is opportunity that individuals will be limited to three minutes. I do know that there was a person who has indicated in the chat, I believe that was Mr. Jesse Davis?
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Davis, we do ask that you state your name and your address, please. You'll be limited to three minutes and you'll be able to speak to any items that was not part of the agenda.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. Unfortunately, there was no public input. I sat through the hour-long homeless presentation. And I want to just say that I'm happy that things appear to be moving forward, but at the same time, I'm kind of saddened that we've discussed a lot of this stuff for over four years now, since the first tent city. But I saw Jeff Ray had already left the conversation after the vote on the last thing. But is there any way possible somebody could reach out to Mr. Ray and, you know, find out if it's possible for him to reach out to other local governmental bodies, you know, other localities, Mishawaka, even Osceola is part of St. Joe County, Granger, Roseland, whoever has a budgetary process. And if they don't want to have a homeless center in their city, that's all fine and good. But all these things that we want to implement always come down to budgetary shortfalls and problems. So these homeless folks are from our entire community. So the entire community needs to help fund these projects. And I understand, and I'm glad that South Bend has taken a leading role in this. But when it boils down to budgetary end of things, someone needs to reach out to the other municipalities and say, hey, look, even if you don't build a building, if you don't provide a service, you can still budget some money, even if it's through the county, in order to help this process along. And that will help, in fact, South Bend's budgetary issues with this. I mean, you know, we can go to council meetings, but a lot of times, we're just looked at like, okay, you know, and people don't hear what we've got to say. Jeff Ray is the head of our St. Joe County Chamber of Commerce, and he should have a little more pull in suggesting this to the other municipalities. But I think it's something that should have been done a long time ago. And hopefully, somebody can reach out to Jeff Ray and say, hey, look, can you implement the process and get it started? And maybe we can generate some funding to help this homeless issue.
Thank you for your comments, and we'll share those with Mr. Ray. Is there anyone else, Clerk Jones, wishing to speak under a privilege of the floor?
Yes, we have Mr. Mike Hammond who would like to speak.
Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, thank you. Good news. I just want to commend Jordan Gatheres and the city team for the wonderful presentation and all the work that they did. And this is kind of to address the concern of Jesse Davis. So basically, Jesse, this is, you know, what we're trying to do is to build a pretty broad coalition, first with the city of South Bend and the county. I'm addressing the county council tomorrow to hopefully get them to agree conceptually to, you know, move forward to kind of reimagine how county government addresses issues like homelessness, because we generally haven't been involved in things like that before. You know, we build bridges and roads and take care of county parks, but this is something that I believe that we need to be involved in for a lot of different reasons. The commissioners are on board at this juncture. But if I can, you know, get some sort of sense that we can work together, continue to work together, because so far, we've worked well with the city, with the motels for now, with the county providing the lodging and the labor, and with the city providing the all-important wraparound services, we've been able to do a really good job of at least keeping 150 people, including 25 children, off the streets. So, you know, the idea then is, is once we have this coalition, you know, it looks like we kind of have a better sense of where we want to go and what the county's role might be and what the city's role might be, then my idea is to reach out to the Jeff Rays of the world and other folks to help form a public-private partnership to bring the community together to address this very important issue. So it's, we're moving in the right direction. We're a hell of a lot farther than we were in that fateful day last spring when those folks were, you know, were moved off those properties. But we're getting there. And I just want to, I want to thank the mayor. I want to thank the council. I want to thank Jordan Gatheres for the work that he's done with this, with these task forces. And, you know, my job, my hope is to bring the county, to keep the county involved and be a partner. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well, Mr. Hammond.
Can I, can, I'm sorry. This is Dawn from the clerk's office. I need to get Mr. Hammond's address. He needs to state his address.
My, I apologize for that. I'm not, it's at 2658 Tomahawk Trail in that South Bend.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under privilege of the floor?
No, that exhausts our list.
I do see one hand up here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. It is Jason Piantek. Mr. Piantek, would you unmute yourself and state your name and your address, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Jason Piantek, 2201 Riverside. My question was just concerning the resolution regarding H.B. Fuller. And when companies or contractors ask for a certain resolution such as this, and they're planning on doing development, are there any stipulations or guidelines that mandate how they hire and do they follow the responsible bidder's ordinance in those cases?
Since that was an agenda item, I would make sure that someone from Community Investment get back with you to address that question.
Thank you very much.
And even, I just want to share that when we have updates from the city officers, that is not a time for public input. And I think I made that statement. It's not that we don't want to hear from you, your questions, your concerns, and most importantly, your support is very, very much needed. So I just want to clarify that as well. Is there anyone still waiting to speak under privilege of the floor?
Okay, I don't see anyone on the list waiting to speak, nor do I see any additional hands up.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Seeing that there is no one waiting to speak under privilege of the floor, the February 22nd, 2021 council meeting is adjourned. Everyone, please stay safe and healthy, and we'll talk and see you very soon. Thank you so much.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, President White.
Good night.